At this time, we have our roll call.
Commissioner Bestia Shaker.
Good morning.
Commissioner Isaac Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Ross V. Senior. Chairman Joshua Derrisaw.
Alabamian present, thank you. Let it reflect Commissioner Reeves. Vice Chair Reeves is not here, but we do have enough for a quarter, being the chairman and three other members present on this body. All right. All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda? Our six two thousand twenty-four?
Second.
It's been properly moved to second and will approve the agenda for today's meeting. Our favorit would be known by voiceful. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of regular minute meetings from July sixteen twenty twenty-four meeting?
Uh.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second and will approve the minutes from July sixteen twenty twenty-four meeting. Our favorit would be known by voiceful. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes approved. Approval workshop minutes from July twenty-four twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, it's been properly moved to second and will approve the workshop minutes from July twenty-four twenty twenty-four. Our favorit would be known by voiceful. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Minutes approved. All right, at this time, we'll open public hearing to amend official CD of Cordial zoning map in front of the following areas. Parcel C thirty-nine zero zero six for our four multifamily residential to H C Highway Commercial. This property is owned by HIT Tech LLC, Herr Patel. Parcel C zero-three-nine zero zero six is located south nearby construction of Quick Trip on Sixteenth Avenue East, I seventy-five, west of Georgia Highway Ninety, and north of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone like to provide city manager background or?
Uh, yes. This, uh, a public hearing is held by the plant commission on July twenty-fifth, and a recommendation from the plant commission is to amend its zoning to, um, change this parcel to our four, I'm sorry, from our four to Highway Commercial.
Yeah.
This, um, landed, it's located on Quick Trip, not, I don't know.
Any comment or commentary from anyone about this? All right, same note. All right, we should close this public hearing now. No commentary. You have the reason. All right. Do we have any speaker or candidates? And I'll have this, but no one signed up to speak on that items. Okay, all right. So we should proceed forward. We have a presentation from our downtown development director, the quarterly report, Monica Winson.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody? Um, I probably gonna start this video that I got by email Thursday. Um, one thing I wanted to point out, the gentleman that made this video on YouTube has a hundred and twenty-one thousand followers. So, um.
Perhaps it was an unpopular opinion amongst rail fans, but I must say, I genuinely appreciate the work and effort put in by a folks from Virtual Railfan and other live camera sites to provide rail fans a chance to see what kind of rail traffic passes through other areas. Sometimes I can find it beneficial of the rail fan to watch trains from Decatur, Alabama, Evansville, Union, and La Grange, Kentucky. That happens, there's some trains that may end up down in my neck of the woods in Nashville, Tennessee. Another one these cameras that I often find myself watching is the one looking at downtown Cordell, Georgia, where the CSX line meets with North Southern at Diamond. Frequently seen trains of both companies making passes for this medium-sized town in Southern Georgia. My wife and I took a week-long vacation earlier in July to Orlando, Florida, for a week at all four Disney World parks, and we were on our way home on Saturday, July thirteenth. I noticed a sign on the interstate where we were looking to get lunch said Cordell, which instantly run a familiar bell to my mind. I ended up finding a spot to eat called The Railhouse Tavern, which is located just around the corner from the Diamond in Cordell. If you ever go there, I recommend you have exactly what I had, buffalo fried shrimp taco. Deliciously fried and good size of shrimp, toss in a flavor bowl and get spicy buffalo sauce, drill it with what appeared to be a house-made ranch. And I also got the onion rings, which was an easy fit. Here's a battered onion ring I've had in quite a while. After lunch, I had to go over and see the rail park in which a camera was located, and mine, my, let me tell you, I am jealous of the rail fan in Southern Georgia that have this. Here in Mid-Atlantic, I do not know of any place of a setup like this to observe train. It has an area of plenty of parking, historical signs educating visitors about the railroad history of Southern Georgia. And it's all complete with a shaded platform with slots to charge coming equipment, vans, bathrooms, and benches to make waiting for a train enjoyable. I had a brief conversation with one rail fan there, and although a lot of people were there to watch it, seeing as though I was not missing much on this day unfortunately. Time wasn't on my side on this trip to wait and capture a train down in Cordell, but as somebody who enjoys checking out the cameras from time to time, it was just very nice to finally see this place in person. I'd love to officially check out more locations of Virtual Railfan in the future, but that's for now. This trip will be stopped. Hopefully next time we can check out a train in person. I'm Danny B. Thanks for watching. I hope you have a great day, and we'll see you next time. Bye, guys.
So, I just wanted to share, um, there are, if you ever, curiosity, go to YouTube and search rail fan in Cordial, Georgia, and you'll see tons of videos like this one. None quite so specific as to restaurants and things like that. Mostly it's just trains. Um, but I like, this one was because of the, his bragging for the platform and the restaurants. Which got me thinking, so yesterday I made some phone calls, and I didn't have time to call everybody, and I will eventually, I promise. Um, so instead of going through this report, y'all got a copy. If you have any questions, just shout them out. Um, but I wanted to kind of give you some statistics and some things that are going on downtown that maybe you don't know about. Uh, for the first eight months of the year, we've had one business closed, two new ones open, three buildings have sold. So that's huge, in my opinion, because the last couple of years, you know, especially the buildings selling. So that's awesome. Um, so I called Railhouse Tavern, I shared this video with Adam, and I called him and we talked, and so we got into talking about numbers. He, Adam's, he big about gathering numbers, and he's very smart about his marketing and his advertising. Um, so he gave me some numbers. He said, first time in last year, first time customers, guests, seventeen thousand. Repeats, six thousand. Um, he said, now, whether these repeats come once, twice, you know, every month, he doesn't know, but those are the numbers. So again, that got me to thinking. So I called Empire, Empire Dance and Performing Arts. They currently have a hundred and seventy-five students. They have twenty-one hundred attendees. They do three performances a year, and those average twenty-one thousand, uh, twenty-one thousand, uh, people a year. Um, they've got a new facade that they just finished this weekend on the front of their building. They, Lauren went on a quest while her partner was out of state to do some work downtown, and she raised enough money. They were having some HVAC issues, roof leaking, the roof that had leaked had damaged the floor. And so she was trying to surprise Alex when she got back, and she raised enough money to do all that work. So they've been extremely busy. Um, Thad's Place, which is on Twelfth Avenue, across from Chris County Powers and Event Venue. Um, he's got new signage up, and his onings should be up this week. Of course, the weather from, because they're from Valdosta, the owning company. So that may hinder that. It may be next week before they get them up. Um, I called Salmon Sammy's. Uh, they're getting ready to start opening Tuesdays and Fridays till eight P. M. Um, they still aren't serving breakfast. They're gonna start opening, uh, the first Saturday of every month. And since November of last year when they opened, they've served seventy-two hundred people. So I just kind of, and I'll get more. This is just what I had time to do yesterday. So my point is, people are coming downtown. So it behooves us to continue our revitalization efforts. I appreciate everything y'all do. I can't think of one time I've ever come before y'all, and you totally know. So, thank you. Um, it's, it's beginning to pay off. Yes, we've still got a lot more work to do, but we're headed in the right direction. So does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, at this time, we'll start doing our monthly reports to our department heads. All right, first is community advancement. Mr. Hill, how you doing today?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Just go over a few things that have been happening. I took a minute to meet the folks at Home Depot to talk to them about some of the housing initiatives that we're looking to kick off. And they are extremely excited about working with us on some things. They are also working with Monica Robinson on some projects right now. Um, I invited a young man from the, uh, Watercolor Festival that had a three-D printing business. He came over to the BGEC, which used to be the old boys' club, and brought three-D printing, um, activities to the kids there with Miss Julia. So, um, you know, I'm looking forward to trying to bolster that program with her. Um, also in working with, uh, video production and film production companies, looking to bring those kinds of activities here. Um, Georgia's in Hollywood, so as much exposure as we can get, Cordial being a camera-like community, there may be some opportunities for partner and training, uh, through workforce, uh, for Cordial. Uh, attended a meeting, uh, about the website that's going extremely well. Spoke to several owners about some development opportunities here. Uh, we are making headways with, uh, several of them, and, uh, as, as, uh, continue the meetings, um, I'll bring you additional information. Nothing really to discuss at the moment. Uh, I just had a, uh, call with DCA about various funding programs that they had. They rolled out some new programs. I wanted to make sure that we were aware of what those opportunities are, and being able to bring them to builders, developers, investors that are coming into our community, letting them know how that the state and the city are supporting the efforts, like what Monica's talking about now, what do you get? Um, I, um, created a letter for housing initiatives. Um, and this is, is to attack our blight issue. So in this letter, uh, the goal is to speak to current homeowners. If you are looking to renovate blighted property in the year, give me a call. I can put you together with P. N. Finance for that kind of thing. If you're looking to sell the property. I have people that I'm talking to right now that are looking to do development deals here that are interested in buying property. Give me a call. If you have property that you're never going to do anything with, please call land bank. Give me a call. That way you can deposit into the land bank, and we can start to work on these housing initiatives for the blighted property that we have to turn the city around. Um, had several meetings with, uh, members of the land bank to talk about some of the different housing initiatives. We'll get back to you on those. Um, Southus Georgia United had a, um, housing seminar in twenty, uh, that's the ten thousand dollar DCA voucher program. I helped distribute some information for that. Um, I participated in the, uh, Propel Housing Study for, uh, in, at Community Clubhouse. That went extremely well. Attended the, uh, Propel Housing, uh, meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, a lot that, that's going on there that I think the city will be, uh, very excited about. Um, I signed up for a DCA symposium. I, uh, did transpose some of the information. It's actually August the twenty-ninth, not August the ninth. I wanted to make sure that that was reflected in the notes. Uh, resumed discussion with, uh, Chris Weasel about the, uh, property they have to be able to renovate that. I had a call one day from someone that owned property right on Gum Creek, and when I went over to look at the property, you know, they wanted to do housing like everyone. But sometimes there's some other opportunities. So what I discussed with the gentleman was best look at reaching out to Flint River Keepers because it was, Gum Creek was on this piece of property, and see how we can create a STEM program related to water conservation. So I reached out to them, spoke with the gentleman, he and I are trying to get together this week, but there are opportunities like that all around us, and we just have to see them and, and take hold of them. And then, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, I had a discussion with Tim Powers and, uh, excuse me, and U, uh, UGA about developing a strategic development team that as we look, as we go into projects, there are opportunities for people like fire safety, uh, u, uh, utilities to all take a look at projects like that upfront, be able to give input so that we're effective in our development. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, I just want to get your, um, comment on that. You say you look on this issue, uh, of thing. I don't know if it's an issue. But it seems that the new renovated homes or houses, um, they tend to be, people are asking for a whole lot more money when it comes to rent. And, um, I know several people contacted me. Um, Cordial used to be a lucky place as far as like, I'm like, someone paid for rent. I would have when I show people that, where people pay for rent, including something like that, and then people would drop their mouth open, you know? Uh, but now it seems that prices leaving your six to seven hundred dollar range to eleven to fourteen hundred dollars. Now that's market-based rent. Most people are paying anywhere from forty to seventy percent of their income in rent. Seems like Cordial was just catching up to that. Uh, but unfortunately, what I'm afraid of with just the type of jobs that we have here, that's gonna be a bit shocking people. And the trend we have here is people will take a job and tip them a pair, and then they end up moving there. And so, of course, that impacts our tax base, um, and with a number of other things. And as we know, every year, uh, when the census reported on the population Cordial that's up is compliant, which puts us in a whole different bargaining chip as far as when we bargain for other stuff. Won't get too specific. But, um, I'm wondering, is there any, um, programs or anything in which we can start looking at some rental assistance or, for instance, even some deposit assistance? Because at rents eleven hundred dollars, somebody may have to pay twenty-two hundred dollars to get in someplace. Um, and that's gonna be a lot, it's not tax season. For a lot of people I know, that's gonna be a lot more than what they would have.
Yes.
And so I just wanted to put that on your radar, radar and just give you feedback as a community advancement manager. Um, that, that's what's going on in City Cordial, and we're most likely only, you know, there may be some issues that people are having. More so as these investors come in, um, who are not familiar with the city and familiar with where, you know, prices happening.
Well, and, and that's one of the things I've had been working, trying to get as many people from Cordial to acquire the properties in Cordial. So that if investors do come in, they're dealing with people from Cordial.
Right.
The other thing is that if we look at the blighted property, um, the construction cost now is about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So a thousand square foot house, which is just larger than an apartment, is gonna cost you about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you look at some of the blighted property in the city and you're able to pick up a home for twenty thousand dollars as an example, if you cut that house completely out, down to the walls and the floor, and come back and spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars bringing it brand-new, you've now got affordable housing. So my goal is to try and take as much of the blighted property and convert that into affordable housing. Because trying to build affordable housing at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is, is, it's not impossible, it's just difficult. And what that does for us is it allows us to bring people in that are building those market rate opportunities, and at the same time, attack our blight property by using it as the housing stock for, for them. And key then would also be having to work with, to buy that property, so that they didn't own the property, not just rent it. In some instances, they'll pay less purchasing the property than they are rent. So as much as I can get people to talk with me about property they own, and people that are interested in acquiring property or moving, I, I encourage them to call me. My phone and my door is always open and available.
Thank you. All right, um, next is finance. How you doing this morning?
I'm doing well. How are you?
All right.
Sales tax produc-, sales tax production for the month of June was four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Um, I would also like to announce that we filled the utility clerk position. Crystal Wilson was hired. Her first day was July twenty-second, and she's doing an excellent job. That's all I have.
Any questions for finance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire, how you doing?
Doing well. How are y'all? I think the new paint looks good. It's a lot brighter in here. It turned out well. This is for reporting period of June twenty-sixth through July twenty-ninth. You know, I talked to you a lot about training and the need for training, um, and I think it's because fire service is turning more into an all-hazard service. And I think this month is a pretty good example of that. We had sixty-four total calls for service. We had three fuel spills, four brush fires, twenty-six calls for medical assist, seven motor vehicle accidents, one structural collapse, one cooking fire, eighteen false alarms, one power line down, one extrication, and two vehicle fires. For departmental news, um, we did sit the board of education with teaching Stop the Bleed, which is a first aid, um, research for the teachers for the new school year we did at the primary school. Fire line was in town. They did complete the pump testing on engine two. It passed, and so engine two, the one that was still on the interstate last year, is now in back in service. Um, we've been working with Rick Smart to do a new recruitment video for the fire department. It is complete. Um, you can see that on the fire department Facebook page and on the city Facebook page. I think it turned out really well. I want to thank Rick for that. I also want to thank everybody who participated in that. And we do have two new hires. Firefighter Jones, who will attend his firefighter one hazmat certification class in Chipstick in September. And then firefighter Prater came to us from another fire department. He's already firefighter one hazmat and EMT certified. That's all.
Any questions for fire? Thank you, sir. Next is Kyle M. Ernig. How you doing this morning?
My report this morning is, uh, the first item I have is CHIP twenty-eighteen grant program. The Southus Georgia Regional Commission Grant Administrator has advised that a housing contractor has completed renovation on one home located within Cordial. The closeout signed documents, inspections, photographs are needed from City Cordial officials, not to be recorded in this county court, Superior Court records. The grant administrator has requested that the city take the floor and after for those pictures of each home improvement of the twenty-eighteen CHIP grant program. And our Cordial planning and zoning commission is in the process of being scheduled for three, for the third Thursday and September twenty twenty-four at ten a.m. On the agenda is to review and consider the request of the property or approached realty company LLC to amend the official city cordial zoning map for the following area. Parcel I D C twelve oh nine, block forty-one, lots four and five, and three oh four, East Fifteen Avenue. To amend the present zoning from O'Neal District to H C Highway Commercial. And next, I have my report. The Cordial Florida Zonement Fields is preparing tentatively for zoning variance in the coming months from August to September at ten a.m. to review and consider public hearing requests from new possible land and business coverage. The Cordial Historic Preservation Commission met July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six p.m. regarding the two historic history. And unless we settle on historic history, there was one application request from Mr. and Mrs. Johnny Dennis requesting to demolish a structure located at four ten Saco Leonard Street. After a thorough discussion, the board approved the request. Also in O'Neal Historic History, there was one application request from Mr. Lee Purvis, Purvis Realty Company LLC, requesting to create a parking lot where a renovated house was demolished. And my next item is historic, this economic development department loan, and we still just haven't filed. We don't have any, uh, law.
Any questions for, Mr. Hill?
I have one, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, the Cordial Historic Preservation Committee is on the one floor of the, of the, it was granted. You know, one of the, Neil, this one was granted or, who was granted? What's it status on that one?
It was granted in the Marsa House.
In the Marsa House?
Yes, ma'am. A renovated house. And the other item that they're requesting would go before the, uh, so.
They're requesting for a parking lot there in a, in a residential area. It was granted?
No, it was not. It would go before the plant commission.
Thank you.
You got that security program.
Okay.
So just to clarify, so the house was demolished, but what has not been granted is to put a parking lot that, that's wait go before them?
And then also, um, Mr. Chairman, City Commissioners, under the CHIP twenty-eighteen grant, the closeout documents, those have been recorded at that courthouse.
Thank y'all so much. All right. Next up is HR. How you doing, David?
Good. How are you?
Good, good.
Chairman, good morning. You have my report in your packet. This is for period of June twenty-fifth to July thirtieth. Just gonna highlight some of the positions we were filling over the past month. On June twenty-fifth, um, we hired a plant operator, Trudy, in the utility control and treatment department. And on July the second, we hired a distribution mechanic in the, uh, gas department. July the ninth, the tenth, and the eighteenth, uh, participated in the utility building for our pair of dues in the finance department. And as Sunny mentioned, we did hire, um, one of those candidates on July the twenty-second. Also, on July the eleventh, we extended additional offers of employment to firefighters. Um, one of those started, started July twenty-second. The others started on July the twenty-fourth. And also on that same day, we extended a additional offer of employment to a distribution mechanic in the water and sewer department. They started on, uh, July the sixteenth. Going back to the fire department, unfortunately, on the twenty-second, we lost a firefighter in the fire department, uh, due to moving out of state. So we were, we were full there for about a day. And, uh, I mentioned the two of them for, and then lastly, the annual, uh, And, uh, I mentioned the two of them for, and then lastly, the annual Gmail retirement census. That is due August the seventh, which is tomorrow. Working on that in over a couple of weeks. Have everything completed, finalized. Uh, it should be submitted by the end of this today, just going through, having double checked, more than six months. So we should have an evaluation on that by the end of the year. And that's all I have. No further questions.
Um, any questions for, um, David? I believe the congratulations is in the order.
Thank you. I was, uh, pleasantly surprised last week that we had a quarter honor for our local force scout troop. And, uh, did a presentation, uh, representing the Juantist Club presenting the, with a community organization award that's in conjunction with Force Council America. And, uh, so I was, uh, I was deeply touched by the kind work from everyone. I appreciate it. We don't do this for recognition, but it's not to be noticed. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, um, next is Mr. Good morning, David.
Good morning.
Morning.
July the fourth. We had a total of two hundred and sixteen cases, um, one hundred and eighty-seven for traffic, twenty-nine criminals. Had seven beach warrants, thirteen license suspensions. And, um, funds, fines, probation payments, uh, we have payments. We have total thirty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars collected. Zero, jail day and zero, um, interest rate.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? All right. Today? All right. Good. Um, police, I believe you're getting codes and animal control as well.
Yes, sir, I will. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. I'll start with the police department. Uh, this is reporting period from, uh, June twenty-fifth to July twenty-ninth. Apart one crime, we had a total of fifty-five robberies, which included armed and, uh, strong-arm robberies. We had a total of three that were business. Uh, we arrested one juvenile in connection with those and were able to recover the vehicle. Uh, so it's still under investigation, but, uh, one juvenile was connected to those, uh, robberies. Uh, motor vehicle thefts had a total of five. Four of those were recovered and three juveniles were arrested, uh, in regards to those cases. Aggravated assaults were up. We had a total of twelve. Two were arrested on a few of those cases. Um, some of them are still currently being investigated. Larcenies or thefts, uh, just in general, twenty-nine. Seven of those were entering auto, nine were shoplifting. Five adults were arrested in connection with some of those cases. Two juveniles were also arrested and, uh, thirteen other thefts. For robbery, we had a total of six. Uh, there were five of those residential with two juveniles arrested and, uh, one was a business. Apart two crimes, we had a total of a hundred and seventy. Incidents reported a hundred and forty-three, community contacts of fourteen, citations sixty-two, thirty-seven warnings, total calls for service of one thousand three hundred and ninety-four for the month. As far as departmental news, we have two applicants that are currently in our hiring process. Uh, we do have one, uh, police officer cadet that's currently in the police academy. She's in week four. Um, next week is firearms, so that's one of the, uh, the big milestones, so we're wishing her well for that. Um, we also hosted Pops with the Cop. Uh, we were there at the back-to-school bash, uh, that was held at the recreational department, and that went very well. It was very well attended. Uh, so we're encouraged and look forward to doing similar events in the future. That's all I have for the police department.
Any questions for, uh, any, uh, report?
All right. Codes, same reporting period, June twenty-fifth to July twenty-ninth. Abandoned vehicles, we had a total of nine inspections, twenty. Uh, what we're seeing again is still dealing with is weeds, junk, just illegal dumping. We have nineteen total, um, cases open. These are cases open, by the way. And, uh, we're still seeing issues with that. Uh, as far as departmental news, uh, we did have a very good, uh, meeting with express disposal, again, to address some of the dumping concerns. I believe we made some headway, uh, as far as communication and how we'll be, uh, dealing with that or teaming up with them to address those issues. We also hired a new code compliance officer, Ms. DeNotro Martin. Uh, she brings a wealth of experience in the codes field, and, uh, so we're very excited to have her on board. Um, we're also going to a new codes software system, uh, basically as a way to track what's going on. Um, it'll just make our, the whole process a lot more, uh, a lot smoother, I should say. Uh, I did have to change it. We were hoping that it would be a quick install. It's not going to be a quick install. It's a sixty-day, uh, install, and with that comes a lot of training. Um, we just had our first training class yesterday. We're looking at, you know, anywhere from one to two training classes a week during that sixty-day timeframe. So it's pretty involved, but we're looking forward to getting that on board. That will definitely help everybody with that. Um, I have everybody signed up for our codes conference through the Georgia Association of Code Enforcement. That's in September. Uh, they're looking forward to that, as well as they are working on ICC plumbing and ICC residential, uh, inspection certifications. The books were ordered and everything was ordered for them, so they are already working on, uh, their certifications for that. Um, what I always forget is the other part, uh, Chris Regional Expansion, as you know, is, is doing well. Murphy Gas is still going, as well as Love's. Uh, so everything is on, on plan with that. That's all I have for code.
Any questions for codes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. Uh, pending jobs, Christians Homes Community, twenty-four apartment complex on West Twenty-Sixth Avenue. I know a groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled this week, but it's listed as waiting on permit. Have they not?
Uh, I believe they have done that. This was, again, when this was made, I don't think they had their permits in order. Uh, but I will go check on that.
When is the groundbreaking coming up?
Uh, I think it's, uh, March, November, maybe, I guess, March.
Yeah.
At ten.
I believe they're due. But I'll listen.
Thank you.
Any questions for codes? Any more questions?
Just a statement, Chairman. I see we got two new residential houses under construction. That's good.
Yeah, we're starting to get up on that.
Thank you, sir. Animal control?
All right, with animal control, same reporting period, uh, total intakes were a hundred and forty-five, so they were very busy last month. City intakes were sixty-two. We had seventy-four from Chris County alone. Um, there were nine other entities, or nine intakes from other entities to other surrounding, um, municipalities. Number of calls received, they had a total of seventy-five, nineteen follow-ups, and, uh, an officer responded or assisted with one of the calls. Um, animals currently in the shelter. Oh, excuse me, the number of adoptions, that's a big one. We had a total of twenty cats adopted and thirteen dogs, uh, so that's very promising. Twenty-one openings right now in the shelter. There were thirteen citations issued for numerous violations. There were nine warnings, um, and you see the open shelter slots, so we do have some slots available. Um, we received a donation for microchipping for all dogs that are being adopted, uh, so they will be chipped. Um, we just received a donation, so we're able to provide that service. We also received a one thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar grant, uh, through the dog and cat sterilization program, um, so that'll allow us to provide those services as well, um, while we use up those funds. Um, we also received a donation of a washing machine. It's kind of, you know, something you don't think about, but they obviously have to clean the bedding and things like that for the cats and dogs, so that was from Stephanie Smith, so we appreciate that donation. And we also received a donation of, uh, fifty bags of dog and cat food from Tractor Supply. So again, we would definitely appreciate their generous donation. And that's all I have for animal control.
Here's, um, questions for animal control? Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you for continuing to do the work you do, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, public works.
Morning.
Good morning, Steve.
Uh, we're going to have the first phase of the offer grant bid open. I was, um, you know, I was twenty at two p.m. at the Public Works Conference Center. Uh, this is the first phase of ten million dollar sewer we had grant. And the first stage is going to concentrate mostly on the north side of Trump Line. And, um, we'll be coming back with, uh, with another round, uh, even right before this get it open and a lot after. Um, but also, we're going to get twelve straight paid between fifteen and sixteen that and, uh, Mr. Glass to seven. Uh, Miss Anna has something extra on that in her report. Uh, natural gas, we recently extended natural gas to New Speedway on Eighth Avenue. And we also going to have to relocate some natural gas lines off Fair Road where the county is going, uh, messing improvements to that road around here like a kilometer. And that's all I have right now.
Um, any questions for public works?
No question but a compliment. Thank you all for doing the road trainways. It's looking much better in Cordeo. You can see some of the street now, you know, trees hanging. I see them more than, thank you.
Well, this is, this is all.
Thank you all.
This is, this is ongoing process.
And that's who you're doing all over the place. Not just one specified place, and I thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just have one comment and question. Uh, is it possible, after meeting with, uh, some of these propelled committees and trying to go through, working on some industrial development, would it be possible to work with River Valley or somebody to give us a diagram or get a grant to be able to show where water and sewer and the size of lines are? So, and where we possibly need, uh, I mean, pump, pump stations and various things, because I think it's very important for some of us that don't know where that stuff is to have it written down.
For the water and sewer, we have a lot of that already.
Map?
Map. Um, when Richie was here, he did a lot of that. Um, I don't, and the gas lines also, uh, it's not a hundred cent plate, but, uh, yes, we can look at. Uh, I know they, the lady that works with, uh, River Valley, she's worked with us for a while, so, uh, yeah, we can look at it this year.
Okay. I think that'd be something great for, for my community advance, like the record I have in a sand, but once it's a bunch of them, it's, it's going to.
Uh, it's, it's hard to put the whole thing in your hands, but.
I know. It's something, it's something to work with, because we have lots of questions.
Yeah, you know, there's a specific area, we can print out some maps, you know, that kind of thing. It's, you know, somebody look at a specific area and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
But we got a lot of it already on.
Okay, great. Great.
What's the barrier for putting it in the hands? Could it not be broken down into sections and labels? I know that would take some time, but, um, it, it sounds like it would be very useful to have hands in hand. I know it may take some lifting, but, uh, it sounds like it would be useful if we can get together and put it in a way that would make sense to have and organize it as you, you know, instead of upon, you know, requesting it, it can be a booklet or a package already put together. So instead of somebody helping bother you all the time, um, they'll know what this thing is, and they can say, I need to look at this area, and they can flip to that area and, and kind of see that. Because, I mean, it's either going to be work upfront, you have that thing, or it's going to be constant coming to you for it, so.
Right.
Yeah. So I was wondering if it could be done, uh, um, between yourself and department and city manager, if we can get that together, um, and have it in his hand, because he wouldn't know what he need until he may need it. And if he may need it, he gonna have to keep coming to you for it, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, we can share with that.
Okay, please, yeah, yeah.
Right now, man, we can even give somebody a, a, you know, a period of, you know.
Right, right.
But you, you want a hard copy, what you talking about?
Well, I'd like to see it, but I don't think, you know, I need it. I, I think it'd be beneficial to the community advance manager. Some of the other commissions may want it, but I, that's the, yeah.
I'll look into that, sure.
I don't do too much of physical for sure. I'm more socially.
I, I do think that's an important issue for us to have some general knowledge of that for August sixth, or meeting August sixteenth with the county.
Fourteenth, right.
Four, four, fourteen.
Fourteenth.
Yeah, I have to get it right from my step.
I, I just think some of that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
What's that mean?
Uh, we're.
Well, it's an intergovernmental retreat, so, yeah, and part of the discussion will be, uh, the city and county working together on various projects. And of course, we know, uh, we have infrastructure, some infrastructure at, uh, exit ninety-seven and ninety-nine, but, um, so it's regarding how projects that we need to work on together moving forward.
Okay.
And of course, as you know, infrastructure is needed in both the city and county.
Right. Okay. Sure.
Thanks, Steve, as always. Uh, all right. Next, um, social media marketing, um, Mr. Smart.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Members of the city commissioners and managers ready. My report is in your packet from June twenty-fifth to present. Uh, just a couple of, uh, notes very quickly, as Chief Valleygood has already, uh, reported. We got together on July tenth. We talked about, uh, a video that would, uh, feature the, uh, fire department so they could use that in recruiting and, uh, also promotion. We shot that on, uh, around the eighteenth, I believe it was. We can believe the editing on Friday and put that in the hands of the fire chief and the city manager. And, uh, in fact, the fire department dropped that on their social media yesterday, and it took off, and no pun intended, it took off like wild. And, uh, and I, and I was glad to see that and honored that, uh, the fire department allowed me to work with them and very humbled that they put up with me, uh, for the time that they did. But I had some great subjects to work with, and they did a great job solving causes down, but that video looks like it does. Uh, I had the opportunity to work a little bit with the police department at back school bash, and we are compiling some video for the PD. We're going to do something similar, maybe a tad more extensive, and so we are, uh, putting some video together for that. As we talk about the website just a little bit, we are in the midst of revision three. And, uh, the entire website committee felt that it was important, uh, to come together with the, uh, project manager, Keon Miller, to talk about where we were in revision two, the things that we really wanted to see as we get into revision three, because revision three is going to be the final. Uh, we, by, by our coming together, by the, uh, city manager, uh, gracing us with her time to be there as well and her influence in that meeting, we are confident that the website is going to be exactly what we are looking for and looking for revision three to be in this week. Keon did reach out to me by email and asked if they could have an extra week, uh, to accomplish some of the things that the website committee wanted to see. And other than that, Honorable Chairman, members of the city commission, that is my report, and I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smart.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
All right. You see, let's do it.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, I believe I already have exactly what you're looking for for the water and sewer. It's in a big notebook. They broke it down for me, rather than a giant map that you roll out, which I really prefer, because that's what I grew up looking at, but it's all in notebooks for the water and the sewer. I have nothing about gas. I don't even want to know about gas. What I have is plenty, but I can get you a copy, or you can make copies of it. And I'll bring it and let you look at it anyway. And any of y'all that want a copy of it, I'm glad to make you one. I don't remember what year it was done. It's fairly recent, but, um, it's not like the last couple of years. But anyway, I was just going to bring you up to date on the water treated. Uh, we pumped three hundred and ninety, eighty-nine million gallons from the well so far this year, and we've treated eight hundred and fifty-seven million gallons of waste water. So we're double still what we should have been. But, um, we got six point five five inches of rain in July, and the total for the year is thirty-four point eighty-seven. We didn't get hardly anything from Hurricane Debbie. She fizzled out, but she got here just about like me. Point one inches at the treatment plant, and on the east side of town at my house, we got point two inches of rain, so this one hadn't hurt us, thank goodness. And I'm so proud to announce that one of my operators, John Wright, passed his class three operator test. He is now a certified wastewater operator. No one has passed this test in years, so. We're finally, we're getting the paperwork up to send to the state to get his license, and since nobody's done it in so many years, it's a whole different ballgame, you know what we used to do. But anyway, uh twenty-four thousand new wells still out of service, I've got to get somebody in here to dig up that pipe that runs from, after it comes out of well, through the wet well, a little pit. Where we inject chlorine and fluoride, and we're probably gonna have to replace that whole pipe. But hopefully, we'll get that done in the next month, and we're gonna be flushing fire hydrants, what I told you back in the first year, we were gonna do it in the spring. But being shorthanded, we didn't get it done, and we are going to flush them all for the, in the next couple of months. So y'all just be careful, do you see my guys out flushing, go around, don't go through, you don't need a car wash that way. You know, we try to stop people and everything, but they think they'll get a good rinsing, but sometimes you'll beat up your car, so stay away from them. And that's about all I have, if y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stevie?
Just information, thanks for helping me with the water softener issue. The, and just uh the default setting for a water softener in our community, or when you buy a water softener, it's like thirteen or fifteen. In our community, you gotta update it to nineteen or twenty, based upon the information you gave me back. So if somebody calls you, asks for the water softener setting, it's nineteen or twenty, so bump, you're telling them to bump it up, cause we got hard water.
Yeah, it is hard water.
Okay, you gotta bump it up.
So that's working good.
Much better.
All right, awesome, all right, well, you're safe.
All right, you too, Miss Stevie, thank you so much. All right, that concludes uh department Eric reports, um we should go into agenda items at this time. First is agenda item meal phones and uh boards, cordial resort, preservation commission. We have um this Andrew Reed that's nominated, and the board is on the peers, Jason Puff, uh that part is nominated. All right, do we have a motion in a second?
So, second.
It's been properly with a second that we um discuss these appointments and then make them. So, any discussions? All right, same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
All right, um it is approved, um there are new appointments to the respective boards. All right, I'm sorry, uh well, no, uh number two, reappointment of Ms. Maddie to the housing authority board, uh do we have a motion?
So.
So, it's been properly moved in second that we reappoint Ms. Maddie to the housing authority board, um any discussion? Same now, uh we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
All right, it is approved, Ms. Maddie will be appointed to the housing authority board, squint. All right, considering approved bank signatures for the bank account established for tourism fund, all right, do we have a motion to consider and approve?
So.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve bank signatures for the bank account established for tourism fund, same now, would you um for that background?
Uh I guess, uh this account will um be for the hotel motel tax that we collect. As you all know, the past two years, we've had findings regarding that pooled account, and this is just beginning to separate some of that out, so we can track what I call special revenues, which are hotel motel tax dollars. Because um the percentage is six percent, three percent to the chamber, two percent to the city, one percent for especially economic development property. So we need to be able to monitor and make sure uh you know that we are allocating those funds correctly and have closely watching the expenditure.
And my question is, in the past, are that one percent economic development, um I'll have to see where that gone. I guess I will have a question, I just ask a request.
Well, it's a.
Lean up to know where's that gone, maybe over the last few years?
Well, the past few years, it, the money is there, um there is a project that we decided on by this commission and then presented to the tourism board. Now, previously, um you know, years ago, it was uh set aside for the quiet uh community, but of course, we received clarification from the general assembly regarding that. And and so right now, those funds have not been allocated to a project.
Well, I, it pays for the observation platform.
Right, but remember, yeah, we had, that money was in, um some of the money was in the uh spa, so we did, that's when I said uh private community. Then it was transferred to the rail platform, which was part of tourism in slots, yes. But after those funds, nothing else has been allocated, and that was before I got here, so.
All right, all right, any more discussion, only agenda number um three. Same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, uh uh signature is approved. All right, uh agenda item number four, considering approved a request of items listed for the cordial police department declared surplus, do we have a motion in the second? It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the items for surplus from the cordial police department, discussion? Same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
All right, um it is um approved, items are declared surplus from the cordial police department. Agenda item number five, considering approved the state of Georgia local government understanding concern national settlement with protocol and announcement and agreement to devounce to a memorandum of understanding, MOU. You have a background summary there, uh do we have a motion in second?
So.
So.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve this MOU, all right, any discussion? Same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, MOU is approved. Considering approved the second reading of ordinance repealing section twelve, uh dash fifteen of the code of cordial adopting a new section, do we have a motion?
Yes, it was settled from July sixteenth, and then, and um I did have opportunity to just speak with uh Judge Wright, because there were questions regarding um if a, if a person is unable to pay their uh one hundred dollar fine, and so of course, their court date can be extended, um to consider a payment plan. Anything else that that you could think of, uh those are the options.
Extinction of payment, uh extinction of court date and a payment plan are the two options that may be considered, okay?
Yeah, those are some of the things that is considered, and also just wanna make sure that you all do have the ordinance that states less than an ounce of marijuana, because um the priest wanted to send out, uh had one ounce, but it should be less than an ounce. Wanna make sure you're approving the, the correct ordinance. And then again, um as you all know, it just states that every time they arrested from marijuana, less than an ounce is a hundred dollars.
All right. All right, do we have, I don't think we have the motion in the second yet.
So.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the second reading of ordinance for a dash fifteen, all right, any discussion? Just, I think just make sure that we get that updated with these things that we talked about, make sure we get that clarity, and I think I should look it up.
So you have a new ordinance? But he's talking about what Jackie said, stipulations.
Right, make sure that we have those. Okay, so the discussion is that make sure the ordinance is updated, uh amended to put those options in there? Right, because we talked about, we were up in the air about what else would happen, so I think we, uh city managers gave us clarity on, with speaking with Judge Wright and everything, so make sure that will be specific. Okay. And when we, when we say less than one ounce, is that what we?
It should be less than an ounce.
Okay.
He's saying over now, she's out right here, she's.
Right.
Right, they just finished charging under the possession of one ounce or less.
That's why I said, you have.
I have, I have a career.
All right, all right, doesn't mention those options?
No, it doesn't mention options, it's just a person to possess uh less than one ounce of marijuana.
I think um.
Yeah, this was the one I gave mention to, this one, to make sure they get updated. See, right here, we didn't change it, that right there. She changed the top, but we didn't change it. Oh, okay, okay, so it wasn't changed.
Yeah.
Y'all see what I'm saying?
The way the language speaks, that means that if um if they have one ounce, then it'll be different based on the way it's written.
Right.
Yes, we would not have jurisdiction, yes, it was created up here.
Right, right, right.
Thank you, I just thought I was.
So, I I think um, all right, I think you need to make some amended motions to, um in a way, I don't know how you would mention that, but. I had questions, I'll leave it up to you to bring the language forward to, um motion. I make a motion that we um amend the ordinance to read um with the, with the extension or the um, and give payment plan. And to make sure that it's word with the less than one ounce. And I think there's one more thing, extension of court date, was it? I said, yeah, I said. Okay, 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 just my, all right, I'll hold you second, all right, all right, good, um all right, we have a motion in second to amend the ordinance. Um, all right, any discretion on the amended motion? All right, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
All right, um it is approved with the uh language, all right. All right, agenda item number seven, considering approved um second reading of ordinance, state compensation for chairman and members of the city commission. We're giving all of the ordinance and conflict, all right, do we have a motion for agenda item number seven? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the second reading of ordinance, um any discussion?
Miss Kim, I would just like to um make sure you all are aware that it was properly advertised, we can say this week.
Awesome, all right. Any other discussions on it? All right, same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Oh, yeah, so, um it is passed, all right. Good, okay, um it's approved that the compensation would be set at sixteen hundred for elected officials for this cordial city commission. All right, agenda item number eight, considering approved the request to amend the, amend the um official cordial zone map for the following areas. Kind of what we have from above here, and do we have a motion for agenda item number eight? It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve, agenda item number eight, any discussion? Same now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
All right, um motion carries, it is approved, all right. Agenda item number nine, considering approved after hall license for Lux of Cordial LLC, uh Lux Bar, uh no exceptions noted, as it come in there. All right, do we have a motion for agenda item number nine? It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve these after hall lessons, also Walmart, new management down there, sorry, left that out, all right, uh any discretion? Same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, after hall lessons are approved. All right, agenda item number ten, considering approved an event promenade for Chris County Middle School Cheerleaders Charity Event, Saturday, August the tenth. Corner sixteen east and Peacon Street, sixteen avenue east and Gru. All right, do we have a motion to consider and approve this event? It's been properly moved in second that we approve this event, all right, any discussion? Same now, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
All right, um it is approved, all right, that brings us to our city manager's report.
Good morning again, city commission uh report, um August sixth, twenty-four. Again, uh hope y'all like the color uh for the, for this room as well as conference room. It brings a, a different uh feel to the room, so thank you all for allowing us to do that. Uh updates and announcement. Updates and announcement of the faith, the next faith-based organization meeting is uh August eighth, that's Thursday, nine thirty A M at Community Clubhouse. The land bank meeting is scheduled for August thirteenth, and uh the power commission, in the power commission boardroom at one P M. The next propel meeting is August fifteenth, uh in the power commission boardroom, eight thirty A M. And um as Steve mentioned, bids for the ARPA project is due August twentieth at two P M. And bids will be accepted in the conference room at Public Works. And then this uh coming Friday, April ninth at eight thirty A M, there is an infrastructure meeting uh regarding propel. And in addition to Maurice, Steve and Debbie will be attending the meeting, as was stated earlier, uh infrastructure is discussed in that meeting. And so we need both of you to attend that meeting as well, and they will be there. Other upcoming events, uh there is a home value education workshop, workshop scheduled for August tenth, uh from ten A M to four P M. Um and so uh there's a QR code where you can stand to attend or register for that event. And then uh tomorrow morning, uh we're going to make confirm that a permit has been uh received. Uh the groundbreaking ceremony will be held for West Side London Development, a Christian home community, ten A M, the five hundred block of West Twenty-Fifth Avenue. And um there's Southwest Georgia United Empowerment Zone. A couple of upcoming events uh from Sam's short line, the murder mystery train is slated for Saturday, September seventh. And the peanut festival uh train um is scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-eighth. You can find information regarding both um um events on Sam's short line. You can find information regarding both, um, um, events on Sam's short line website. As you all know, earlier this year, we entered into the Go Sun Smart Georgia Project with Emory University. The period of participation is April twenty twenty fourth through September twenty twenty four, uh, the internal coaches are listed. We have Marcia Pritton and Jay Croxton, Public Works, Captain Jeremy Taylor, and Patrol Commander Danny Hicks for the Police Department, and Debbie Wright, and Jonathan Wright, and U C and T. And part of the project includes just making sure that those employees who are out in the elements are aware of, of the heat index and making sure they are taking the necessary precautions. So I would like to highlight the Public Works Department, uh, David mentioned at the last meeting that he was impressed with the work that Marcia had put together for the Public Works Department, and I want to make sure that you all see the work that, uh, Marcia and J- uh, Jay are doing in the Public Works Department. And so, again, it's to encourage employees in taking the necessary precautions when working out in the summer heat. And so, Public Works does the following, they provide bottled water for all outdoor staff to ensure they hydrate before and during work hours. And we have a picture there, uh, showing their, you know, getting their bottled water for the day. In addition to that, a post educational material provided by Go Sun Smart and the H R department near the time pocket and the break room. And so, as you can see, they have all the information relative to the heat index as well. In addition to that, there, there are group text messages on sun safety and current weather conditions, and so they are doing a lot, uh, in terms of making sure the employees are aware of what's going on with the weather and how to protect themselves. So kudos to, uh, the Public Works Department and to all of our internal, uh, coaches. Congratulations to a couple of employees, of course, you've already, uh, heard from David, so congratulations again, David. And then, uh, back then, I want to say it was June or July, uh, Chief Hurd was awarded the American Dream Spotlight Award for twenty twenty four by Southern Luxury Group Realty. So just a couple of notes regarding other employees. Next, a discussion on property taxes, city residents pay city and county taxes. Some appear to be surprised that they have to pay city and county taxes, uh, city taxes are paid here at City Hall, and you pay county taxes down at the county office. And so, the question has been asked, why do I have to pay city and county taxes? And so I just wanted to give just a quick example, uh, as to the reason why, the county is in charge of providing services that everyone has to have. For example, the county handles elections, voter registration, the sheriff office budget is through the county, we have courthouse, airport, health department, landfill, and recreation services, including all parks in the city, except for the two downtown parks, Standfield and Wigginsfield. A lot of people are unaware that the county handle most, the majority of the recreation services here in the city, and that includes, again, all parks, except for our two downtown parks, Standfield and Wigginsfield. And so with that said, uh, the city will have a delinquent property tax sale the first Tuesday in September, September third. And because of the number of delinquent taxpayers that we have, there will actually be two sales for the first one is scheduled for Tuesday, September third. Courthouse on the steps of the courthouse. Excuse me, City Hall, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about the woman on the counter. Yes, I'm sorry, here at City Hall.
I didn't know, but that's what I thought, yeah.
I'm sorry, and, uh, yes, it will be held, uh, here at City Hall, I do apologize for that. Alright, any other questions regarding the property taxes? Okay. Alright, just, uh, a update and reminder about a couple of new laws, uh, Senate Bill three nine ninety-five, Governor Kemp signs Senate Bill three ninety-five until long April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Requires certain government buildings, courthouses, and schools to provide opioid antagonists like Narcan for opioid overdoses. And start, well, it started July first, cities with defibrillators and city hall or official government buildings must also provide three doses of the opioid antagonists for use during local government, um, events. I confirm with Police Chief this morning that we do have three doses here, but also we were looking, we will look at making sure that if we need to, we can provide, um, those doses also within the, uh, defibrillator that we have located right outside the courtroom doors. And then just rema- reminder of House Bill four oh nine, we know school is back in session, sometimes people are impatient, but just a reminder that the fine is one thousand dollars for drivers who pass a stop school bus. So just a, a reminder about that. Additional items to report, uh, we received a refund, uh, refund check from Tennessee Energy in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents for natural gas purchases. So we're always excited about receiving that check. And then, uh, sometimes we're asked about the surplus items, what happened with those, we know we include, um, in the language to, uh, allow those to be, uh, submitted to govdeals dot com. And so just want to let the citizens know that if you're looking to, uh, bid or purchase any other items that are declared surplus by the city commission, you can go to govdeals dot com. And then I do have one action item, as Steve mentioned, he received a request to close twelfth, twelfth street between fifteenth and sixteenth avenue, and that is near the Gillespie, uh, project. Uh, part of the, um, deal with the developer is that they will pay, uh, that, uh, pay twelfth street. And so, again, that's an action item that I will come back to. And then, of course, you all have, uh, my, um, in your packet, the meetings and events that I attended in July. One that I would like to highlight is the Southwest Georgia Railroad Excursion Authority Meeting, uh, uh, in my presentation, I had two flyers for events for Sam's short line. But then also Chris Lockwood, who is the site manager, he presented a five-year plan to the authority. And the five-year plan includes complete the shop and storage tracks, return Hawkins car in service, complete a full inspection on all Sam cars, rebuild a second baggage car into a kitchen commissary car. And rebuild Leslie into a lounge car and purchase locomotives. And, uh, I'm sure we all hear about Day Out with Thomas, and so this year there were six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine tickets sold for Day Out with Thomas. And merchandise totaled fifty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars, so that is a good, uh, tourism event here, uh, in the community. And, um, I would like to go back to the action item. And again, that request is to close twelfth street between fifteenth avenue and sixteenth avenue so that the street can be paved.
It's been properly moved and, um, second that you closed the streets fifteen and sixteen?
Uh, twelfth street between fifteenth avenue and sixteenth avenue.
Okay, and, um, alright, any discussion? Saying no, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried, it is approved for closing of the street.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I want to introduce, uh, George Wright. Uh, Mr. Wright has joined our firm yesterday, he was previously the general counsel of Albany State University, and now is going to be working on a variety of things, but among those things will be local government, I just want to introduce to, I think the city manager's already piled up some projects for it.
Yes, I have.
Uh, with property matters, I'll talk to her just a moment. And Mr. Chairman, I just want to give out to y'all the information in this code section, with regard to every, uh, just to remind you, uh, when someone gets indicted on, on the process of what the governor and the D A would be going through, and I'd be happy to talk about that if you'd like, but, uh, I just, I know people be asking you about it, and you needed the code section to be able to answer their questions.
Could you virtually walk the box?
Sure, I'd be happy.
So, I don't know, I'm understanding enough, so.
Yes, sir. But we don't really have a role at this point, as, as you know, Mr. Chairman, uh, when someone is indicted for a felony who's a public official, and this doesn't apply just to us, it's all public officials in Georgia. Uh, the district attorney, uh, upon the indictment sends that information to the governor. The governor then impounds a commission of three people, there'd be two other, in this case, uh, city council type people in other cities, as well as the attorney general. Uh, and then they make a determination of whether that person should be temporarily removed from office, uh, during the indictment period. Uh, and so, uh, and, and of course, the, uh, the, they have to make a determination that the indictment of the alleged, uh, crime relates to their performance or their activities. So, uh, so that'll happen, and then, uh, uh, they make a recommendation supposedly in fourteen days, sometimes it takes a longer fourteen days, and the governor would then make a determination, he may, it's not a, not a shall, it says he may, uh, remove that official temporarily until the end of their term. Or, or, uh, or until the end of the next court term, uh, which is a little, uh, fuzzy in there. Uh, and, uh, that's pretty much what happens, so we don't have a role in it at this point, Mr. Chairman, as you know. Uh, so, uh, that's a quick, uh, quick summary of what's in here, uh, there are a few more details, but I thought you might need it, uh, because I'm certain people will be inquiring about it.
Any questions?
Alright, sir, we've had, uh, some, uh, of course, news about some other litigation, uh, we are represented by Freeman and Mathis on that. If the council commission would like, I'd be happy, and the city manager would be happy to set up, uh, an executive session with them to discuss their next steps, if you'd like. Would y'all like that? Oh, you have, I've sent everything I have, uh, to you, uh, and, uh, but, uh, they would, if you need further discussion, they'd be happy to do that, as I'm told.
So that'd be well, that's a?
Yes, sir.
Well, discussion, I want to go back to the governor, um,
Yes, sir.
Uh, responsibility or authority in this. If it gets to that, and it is, uh, suspension, um, temporarily remove or suspension, um, the governor also, I believe, has authority to appoint somebody for that.
Yes, sir. For that.
Now, I think the code is that if we don't have anything at all charter ordinance, then, um, the governor does, but if we do.
If we don't.
And we do not at this current time.
We do not have that.
So.
So he could appoint if he wanted.
Right, so it's incumbent on us if we won't, if we do not want him to appoint somebody, and we would rather appoint somebody to, um, have an ordinance.
We could do that, uh, there, there is, uh, this came up last time, and by the time we considered it, it was over, if you remember. And, uh, uh, the, there is some feeling that the, once the act is done, that we can't go back and pass an ordinance in arrears, uh, but if the commission wishes to do so, I can, I can do that for you.
I thought it was six months, isn't it six, I thought it was six months of the unexpired term we could appoint, at over six months?
Removal.
Removal, that has removal, but okay.
So, yeah, basically what I've gotten a lot of calls about is. Yeah, we, yeah, so. Our thing is, and we probably have to do this as soon as we can, because right now, if it gets to that, then the governor would be, have authority to, um, appoint. But right now, and we gotta move fast as we can, be, because, um, you know, it ain't there yet, but if they beat us to it, then the governor will, but, and, but we need an ordinance standing in the case of a suspension, what we could do.
How much specifically? I could say that, he, he didn't seem predisposed to do anything, uh, with this last time, if you recall.
Yeah.
But, uh, matter of fact, that, uh, Mr. Ken came and argued that they messed it up, and I agree with him.
Right.
And, uh, think it is, so we noticed him, and we just, uh, put it back, but, uh, we got a pretty good ways to go, you know, or they'll have this, this commission established, and then he'll make a determination, so, but I'll get you an ordinance.
It is because it requires two readings, so if you all want an ordinance, what makes meaning it?
Yeah, I think we need, uh, uh, um, for that, maybe next week, because it's gonna take a month if we have to do two readings.
Right.
Uh, so we probably need to move it, uh, deliver speed so it's speed.
Uh, maybe next week.
Yeah.
I'm not available on Monday.
Tuesday? Are y'all a little? What's the name of six, plus that thirteen?
The thirteenth, I already had a meeting, I'm looking here.
I thought we, oh, so, uh, no, we have the fourteenth, we got, yeah.
Yeah, the fourteenth.
We got that.
Land bank meeting.
It would be right past the meeting.
We all.
Had to be at eight thirty two.
Yeah, we all there on that.
Next Tuesday morning, I'll be in Randolph County now.
Four o'clock maybe.
But, uh.
The city attorney says he'll be?
I, I, Tuesday morning, I'll be in Randolph County, and, uh, and I come from there to come to the, the land bank at one.
One.
Oh, where?
Tuesday.
So I'd be, I'd be here that afternoon, I guess.
Yeah, the land bank, yeah.
You could do it after the land bank meeting, because you would already be here. If he does it after the land bank meeting.
Right, so, uh, we can put by an hour, so you all want to sit maybe?
Three o'clock?
Four. Three, that'll work.
Three.
Three o'clock?
Three.
On, on thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Chairman, the, uh, we, so the continuing saga of who we're gonna get to be the ethics officer continues, uh, I, uh, one that the council commission voted on pretty much has abandoned it. I, I can't get him on the phone, he won't return calls and all that, so I begin searching for, I think I've got one, uh, but I have not, uh, uh, finalized, uh, the fee that he would charge. If you would give me another two weeks, I'll have that down, or maybe Tuesday, I'll have that by then.
My suggestion would be, because we're, we're spending a lot of money, um, now, and every penny that we spend for something, I understand why this commission made that change. And I think this commission is in a different place now, but I, I think we need to go back to what we had, using our citizens of the city of Cordeal and the committed form, the way it was, because if we're increasing our money, if we're trying to give the employees more money. While we spend money on the officer, and I think we have the, uh, ability to go back, and you, my opinion is that would happen out of spite, uh, while we chose the ethics officer. Uh, and it really called my attention, I always done the right thing in a lot of position when the camera calls to me, uh, I think we should go back to the committee and do it right, meaning we do what it says, and that means have citizens from the city of Cordeal. So that's my opinion upon that, that, that's the best and easier and the financial feasible thing, doing my opinion. So I, I think we should go back to having it free, basically, and appointing citizens the form that, at this committee like we had before. And appointing citizens the form that ethics committee like we had before. Um, but of course, it's a, it comes up to a vote. Uh, if you all want to pay a lawyer to, uh, decide, but citizens can decide, of course, that's up to you guys. But I'd rather spend that money on other things. Because we already going to pay a lot in legal fees anyway. And we don't have a choice in that matter, so we do have a choice in this matter.
I can, I can, I can, with y'all's desires, I can, uh, craft it, have that by two as well. It's up to you.
Well, I think as long as we keep going back and forth with it, if we got the citizens, if that will be a quick fix, because we can't, how long have we been talking about this attorney?
Well, I, 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 you know, I just didn't get him on, uh, yesterday, so, uh, he's, um, persons that I, in Albany, that I've known for a while, it took me a while, it's a nasty job, you know what I mean? Uh, not many people want to do it, so I was really, uh, searched for a pretty good while. But if y'all want to go back to a panel, uh, uh, most people frankly do, down here, do have a panel. I think in Atlanta, where they have a lot more of these, uh, as the city managers pointed out. They do have, uh, hearing officers doing them. It, it generally, it's a rare occurrence, and in fact, we've had no further action in that case. So y'all tell me what to do, I'll be happy to, to make that amendment if you want to.
I don't have a problem if it's citizens, but the majority's ethics complaints are against the commission, so I think if we go back to the citizens, we need to have, like, maybe our department heads choose the board.
Right.
Uh, or choose the members if our city manager could find some, I just don't think it's fair for us to choose.
We're not going to get anybody from out of town.
Right.
You know, I think we all, we knew that, and I think Commissioner Reeves was sure that that would be, but nobody wants to do it. Nobody wants to come involved in our mess.
Nobody wants to deal with politics, so I think it's better.
Yeah, it's gonna be somebody in town.
Given what we have, our dynamic, dynamic, if somebody else could choose the citizens. Uh, I think it'd be fairer than us choosing, in our current situation. Now, now, if we didn't have the situation we have, I don't have a problem commissioners choosing the board members.
Well, I think, I, I, I don't think that's true, because the ethics complaints were mostly against me, then now against Commissioner Reeves. Uh, they're not against the full commission. Uh, I don't have ethics complaint anymore, that's pinned against me. And the biggest concern was that I would somehow pick people that was for me. Uh, when, you know, the way it was particularly designed was the chairman got a pick, unopposed. The chairman got a pick, which the commission had to agree upon, and then the commission got a pick. Uh, I think that is the right and best thing to do, because at the end of the day, um, we gotta have a system of holding another accountable, but the citizens who vote for us actually do that and hold us accountable. Uh, and that's the way that citizens can continually hold us accountable. Department heads, with all due respect, are not designated to hold us accountable. It doesn't work like that, uh, which they can't, should, not saying that, but they vote, the people that vote for us, um, um, well, I guess there is one against me, but, um, the ones that vote for us, um, should be in a position to hold us accountable. And I think, um, I think we, just like a jury, when you sit and people deliberate and press, um, and, and, and get things out, I think our citizens are more than capable of coming up with a decision, not based on who they like, but based on what it is said and what happened and the facts. I, I don't think we should take that away from our citizens. Um, um, I, I just don't. Um, so I, I, I'm not in favor, I think, at the same time, I think we could draft it and have it ready to us, and then we discuss all this Tuesday instead of beforehand.
You know, you saw Ken from a model gym head about twenty years ago, and, uh, I like to have different ways. Like, the most, most of them, of the places that I represent that have this, it, it's, uh, they're all elected by majority vote of the council. So, uh, uh, you know, I'm gonna start with that, and if y'all refuse to change that, then we'll see, and then I'll go for that.
That's right.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colvin, in my experience, uh, for those who are appointed by the governing body, normally, uh, each elected official.
They choose one sometimes.
Choose one from their ward, and then, of course, if there is a conflict of interest, then that person would accuse themselves.
Right, right, and that was the case, we hadn't, I felt like one should be accused, and two didn't live in the city. Uh, so, yeah, but thank you, if you can get that to us.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other, um, things?
No, sir, thank you very much.
How many reasons for executive session?
No, sir, I don't think so, but I know, other than what we just talked about.
At this time, uh, call, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Hello.
Sir.
Uh, probably moved seconded, we're adjourned this meeting at ten thirty A M. Adjourned the meeting at ten thirty A M., all the papers, if you know about what's so.